Good evening, welcome to the Revere City Council meeting on May 12th, 2025. Could you all please stand to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call the members.
Roll call of the members, Councilor Argenzio.
Here.
Here, Councilor Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Councilor Janino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Garino Swaya.
Here.
Here, Councilor Haas.
Here.
Here, Councilor Herramio.
Here.
Here, Councilor Kelly.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councilor Nowoselski.
Here.
Here, Councilor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Silvestri.
Here.
Here, quorum is present.
That one's working.
Oh, there it goes.
We're back.
So moved on the motion.
Thank you. That was approval of the Journal of April 28th. Calendar item number three, motion presented by Councilors Garino Swaya, McKenna, and Herramio that the City Council award a certificate of commendation to Justin Pioppi of Luigi's Pizza in Beauchamp in recognition of his efforts in competing on CBS's reality show Survivor.
City Councils.
Tonight, we have the honor of recognizing one of our own, someone who has brought pride, admiration, and national attention to the city of Revere. We offer this commendation to Justin Pioppi, who represented our community with integrity and heart as a cast member of Survivor Season 48. Justin's journey on the show was more, was about more than just a competition. It was about character. He played with thoughtfulness, resilience, into quiet strength that resonated with so many viewers, but here in Revere and far beyond. A graduate of Yale University, Justin returned home not for recognition but for responsibility. When his mother fell ill, he stepped up, taking over the family restaurant and continuing to serve our community in a deeply personal way. He reminds us all that true leadership isn't just about titles or accolades, accolades, it's about showing up, showing up for your family, your neighbors, and your hometown. Justin follows in the footsteps of another proud Revere native, Revere Police Captain Amy O'Hara, who retired today, who was also on Survivor in 2005. She, she was the first from our city to appear, and nearly 20 years later, Justin has carried the torch forward with character and class. On behalf of the Revere City Council, Council McKenna, Herramio, and myself, we commend you, Justin, where are you, for representing Revere on a national stage.
I'm looking at him.
Thank you for showing the world, thank you for showing the world the strength, heart, and grit of our city and its people. We are proud to call you one of our own.
Thank you, Councilor.
Beautiful.
Thank you. You know, we have to have fun up here, too. It's not all about seriousness. So I just want to say a little bit about Justin and his family. I've known Justin's mother Candy all my life. We were kids, we grew up in Beauchamp together. A little bit about her son. Her son, Justin, quit his job as a legislative aide at, at the State House to help his, to help run his family's business, Luigi's, which we all know, after his mother was diagnosed with leukemia. His ambition was to go to law school, but he went down to Luigi's and he made, he helped the family business and made pizzas with his father. I believe Justin is the fourth person from Revere and Winthrop as a Survivor contestant. If he won, he said he would give the check to his mother so she wouldn't have to work again. Justin, you made the city of Revere and Winthrop very proud, first by being the wonderful young man that you are, to step up and help your family and to be a contestant on Survivor. I'm very honored to have the privilege of knowing you. Thank you, Councilor.
All right, well, it's not every day you get to give a recognition to your former boss, so, yes, no, that's not true. So when I interned for Speaker DeLeo, Justin was a legislative aide there, and aside from being incredibly kind to me, was a real mentor to me, and his character behind the walls of power, right, I think is something that we saw displayed watching Survivor. And he, he's continued to stay, we've continued to stay in touch, even if it's just a light touch here and there, and of course, I ate way too much of his pizza, but, but it's such an honor to be here to not only recognize Justin, but his mom, his dad, and, and the entire POP family, who is filled with public servants, not just Justin, who is a public servant himself, having worked in the State House, but his brother, who's a police officer, firefighter, firefighter, yeah, sorry, and, and a real honored, and thank you, Councilwoman Swaya, Garino Swaya, for allowing me to jump onto this, to this recognition, and congratulations again, you've made us all really proud, and, you know, as a friend of yours, at least I like to think of a friend of yours and your former mentee, you know, really incredibly proud for, for how you represented us out there, brother. I appreciate it.
Okay, Justin, in recognition of his remarkable achievement to be chosen and compete as a contestant in the CBS original series Survivor Series 48, and whereas he has given the opportunity to embark on a once-in-a-lifetime adventure to compete not only for himself but for his family, especially his mother, and whereas he exemplified the very best of what it means to be community-driven and heart-led, special recognition is hereby accorded to Justin Pioppi. This certificate of commendation is presented by the City Council of the City of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its citizens, this 12th day of May in the year of our Lord 2025, and of the Independence of the United States of America, the 248.
Thank you all for coming tonight. I know there's a lot of important things on the agenda tonight, but just to be included in this conversation is just lovely. I just want to thank my mom, my dad, who's here, several friends and family, my Aunt Cindy is here, too, who's the best photographer, I'm sorry, Al, she's, she's a great photographer, too. And then the person who actually helped prepare me for the show, Maria Botar, who is a lifelong Revere resident, a community advocate herself, so it means a lot that you are here. I had a team of very strong women prepare me for this show, and I would not have done nearly as well if, if that weren't the case. But just thank you to Mayor Keefe, to the Council President Silvestri, Vice President McKenna, the entirety of the City Council, the Clerk's Office, Clerk Melnick. Just one last thing, thank you all for commending the community efforts. I wore this shirt on the island. It came back in one piece, believe it or not, which is amazing, but it was so popular online that we got people calling Luigi's, messaging me online, they said, where can we buy that shirt? So we wear these on Monday nights, we have a pizza special every Monday, four to eight, half-priced pizzas, so if you get out early in time, comes winners for dinner, councilors. But the money raised from the sales go to charity. There was just a, recently a Revere family that had a awful tragedy in Belize, the proceeds to these shirts went to that family to cover any costs or help cover the costs for, for those issues. And then my mother, when she was, and then when my mother was undergoing chemotherapy for leukemia at Mass General, caring for a cure at Mass General, the Nurses Fund, they did remarkable work, not only for her, but for their whole unit, and, and these people are angels among us, and I want to make sure that they are recognized, and the money for these shirts going forward is going to go towards, towards that. So people with leukemia, with cancer, they will be able to have the same experience. So if you want to, they're great shirts, I love them. If you want one, please come to Luigi's or they're on sale, luigis item order dot com, and just know that you'll get a great shirt and it will go towards a great cause. So thank you all again, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Calendar item number four, motion presented by Councilor Garino Swaya that the City Council award certificates of commendation to the women of the Jack Satterhouse, who were featured in the viral Calendar Girls Project.
Councilor Swaya.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is my great honor to stand before you today on behalf of the Revere City Council to recognize an extraordinary group of women, the senior residents of the Jack Satterhouse, who have captured the heart of our city and indeed the entire nation with their joy and creative spectacular seniors Calendar Girl Project. Their vibrant energy, sense of humor, and bold spirit remind us all that it's never too late to shine. Through their now-viral calendar and their recent appearance on the Kelly Clarkson Show, they've brought pride to Revere and shown the world the incredible talent and community we have right here at home. Today, today we extend our heartfelt congratulations and present each of you with an official commendation from the City Council in recognition of your outstanding contribution. You have uplifted the spirit of the city and inspired people of all ages. Thank you for representing Revere with such grace, courage, and fun. Congratulations, ladies, you truly are stars. Okay, so what I'm going to do is read the commendation just once, and then I will ask you to all come up here if you can, unless you want me to come to you, I can do that as well. We're going to go by month. The City of Revere, Massachusetts, certificate of commendation is in recognition of your outstanding participation in the Calendar Girls Project at the Jack Satterhouse and in acknowledgement of your spirited involvement, artistic expression, and bold presence by bringing joy and inspiration to our local community, as well as capturing viral national attention, accumulating in well-deserved feature on the Kelly Clarkson Show in New York City, wherein proving that creativity and confidence know no age. Special recognition is hereby accorded to Donna Stahl, January celebrates New Year's. This certificate of commendation is presented by the City Council of the City of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its citizen, the 12th day of May in the year of our Lord 2025, of the Independence of the United States, the 248. Congratulations, Dawn. Loretta Paquette, February enjoys a game of bingo. She wants to. Do you want me to go there? She wants to. Do you want me to come to them?
Why don't we open up this and you can get them right here?
Yep.
That's what Anthony's doing. Anthony, all you got to do is.
Right, yes, good. Okay, Loretta Paquette.
It doesn't slide? Oh, I'm actually.
Sienna Yello. Ms. June. Paula Weiner. Weiner. Kathy Bennett. Janice Gilman. Mary Correa. Judy Meany. Judy Jantoska. Lois Levine. Leah Charmella. Hi, Julie. Phyllis Snyder. Shirley Souzy. And now you can put those down. And last but not least, the woman behind it all, we have Rabbi Nior Nevo. You're representing Shirley.
Councilors, want to stand behind them, we'll get everybody in. Promise. Are we going here? Mayor? Okay, like that. That's good. All right, here we go. Like that. One, twice. Mayor? Look over here. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, one of us seniors would like to speak if that's, if that's okay with you?
Well, we want to thank, oh, sorry. This way, okay. Over here is okay? Yeah, yeah, this is good. Yeah, yeah, so what can I say? You going to tell me if you want?
Anything you want.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay, well, first, excuse me. On behalf of the Satterhouse, we want to thank Angela so much for doing this for us, it means a lot to us. It was quite a journey for all of us, and we all enjoyed it, we had a great time, and the rabbi guided us the whole way. I hate to do this, but since the other fellow had his little t-shirt, I'm going to show you our calendar, okay? So, I'll give you a quick look, all right? We do have some with us, and they're for sale.
What are you fundraising for, Brock Satt?
Excuse me?
What are we fundraising for?
Okay, well, what we're fundraising for is for activities and trips and all kinds of goodies for the residents at the Satterhouse, okay? We plan a lot of outings, plays, in-house activities, concerts, disc jockeys, parties, and we need money to do all these things because we do not have a bus at our facility. And every time we go out of town, I have to hire a bus, and the buses range anywhere from $1,450 and up. We're going to Newport, Rhode Island, May 22nd, and to see a play and a cabaret and luncheon, and that bus is costing us $1,850, and the association pays for that. We do not charge the residents at all for the bus trips. All our trips are at minimum prices so that each and everyone can go and enjoy themselves, because without a lot of these doings that are going on in the building, a lot of people wouldn't be able to get out and see certain things. So we try our best, I'm always looking for new places to go, new activities, and this money here is going towards our trips and everything else. So if anyone's interested, you can save shipping charges tonight, they're $15. Or you can go online to SentationalSeniors. SpectacularSeniors@gmail.com, correct? Okay, and then you have to pay postage, $1.50, I believe. Okay, thank you so much, it's been a pleasure being here, thank you.
Calendar item number five, the Short Term Rental Office will provide an update on short-term rentals throughout the city and to discuss the effectiveness of the new software and recent changes to the ordinance.
Okay, we're going to take five minutes. Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number five, the Short Term Rental Office will provide an update on short-term rentals throughout the city and to discuss the effectiveness of the new software and recent changes to the ordinance.
Vin?
Vincent Argenzio from the Short Term Rental Office at 249 Revere Broadway. So in terms of the overall picture of short-term rentals in the city, there's 78 properties in total. Of that 78, there's 65 in a state of either being registered or compliant, so they're going through the re-registration process at the moment, and of those 65, there's currently 13 that are in a state of non-compliance or unidentified, meaning that our software has identified that there is a short-term rental present within a certain area, but it may not actually be present within Revere, so it actually may be in Chelsea, Winthrop, the surrounding city or town. Usually that takes anywhere from a week or two to confirm and identify, and once And once we do identify them, they either go on our mailing list to notify that they need to register at the city of Revere if it is a short-term rental operating within the city. In terms of the new software, our original software that we were using up to about six months ago would have cost the city $25,000 this upcoming year. The price has been increasing exponentially, so we did change to a new software provider. That new software is $9,950 now. So, there is quite a bit of a cost savings, and we do get the same service of identifying the properties, mailing properties, so reminders to register, reminders that they are in a noncompliance state, or a cease and desist if they continue to be in a state of noncompliance. In terms of some of the changes to the ordinance that did happen last time that myself and the director, Nick Hattonozzo, were here, we did ask for the fines to be increased to $490 at a maximum, the ability to post cease and desist at the property, and then also having more stringent regulations for the registration process, so mainly focusing on confirming primary residents within the city of Revere. So we have implemented those ordinance changes. We have issued fines. Up to this point, it's about $30,000 in fines in total. We have posted cease and desist at properties when necessary if a property did continue to stay in a noncompliance state for a period of time. That's not the first thing that we do go to, but we have used it. And we also have made more stringent regulations to registering, which has brought the number of short-term rentals down in the city. Not many of, when we first started this program in 2021, there were about 1,100 short-term rentals within the city. We're now down to 78. So once we did implement those more stringent regulations for the registration, we've probably lost, I believe, eight up to this point. So not many, but it did take the number down on a few more of them. So, at the moment, we are reregistering a lot of properties, and that process has been going well with the new software. And I do believe, at some point in the near future, the CFO, Mr. Viskey, will be presenting as part of a package a community impact fee that the city can adopt as well, that the state allows for short-term rentals, which is 3%. So I believe that will be coming up in the near future as well from Mr. Viskey.
Thank you, Vin. Counselors? Counselor Garino Swaya.
Thank you, Mr. President. Vinny, thank you, Vincent. Thank you for everything you've done, because I'm constantly bothering you with the short-term rental questions, and I appreciate the help with enforcement as well. I have two questions. Will there still be mandatory inspections from both Short-Term Rental Office and the Fire Prevention Office? And if so, how often?
So, that is yearly. So every time the property needs to go through the registration process to renew their permit, so we would be doing a re-registration of that, a re-inspection of that property, mainly in that is for safety, so make sure that the smoke detectors work, that there's hot water, and that there's no other safety issues, that, you know, means of egress aren't blocked, things of that nature, so yearly.
And my other question is, is there an occupancy limit?
It is two persons per bedroom.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cogliano?
Thank you, Mr. President. Vin, thank you for being here tonight. I want to thank you for the job you do in your department because the calls I've gotten relating to short-term rentals and issues with parties, and I think one time we had a complete film crew outside filming in the middle of the street. But, so thank you for cracking down on that and keeping our neighborhoods quiet. I just had a question in regards to the revenue. What kind of revenue are we seeing from our short-term rentals? I know we've lost eight so far, but if you could just elaborate.
So, we, part of the ordinance changes, we did go up to $300 for the registration fee, which compared to other cities and towns, that did seem what was comparable. So, not the cheapest, not the most expensive. Revere is a fast-growing city, so that $300 for a registration every year basically equates to the average of a night in the city of Revere. So that does turn out to, we do have 60 there, so roughly $18,000 in registration fees, which does cover the cost of the software that we use. And then, this is a new feature that we do have with the software, is that we can estimate the tax that is brought in from short-term rentals that's collected by the state. It is a new feature, so we haven't been able to compare to the estimate to the actuals yet, but it does appear as though, on the conservative side, the city does collect around $100,000 in tax revenue from short-term rentals.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few questions. First of all, is it still owner-occupied?
Yes, and part of the new registration requirements does make that more stringent for proving primary residents and that it is owner-occupied.
Now, being the, one of the directors of the Steel, ever identify rooming houses?
Yes, we have on occasion, and I believe that one of them that we did identify was on Bellingham Avenue, in the sense that the rooming house, so that the property was renting bedrooms, and the bathrooms, kitchens were considered shared spaces. Short-term rental websites like Airbnb do allow that. The city ordinance does not. So we have identified three, at this point, three rooming houses throughout the city of Revere, under the definition of that they are renting out bedrooms and then sharing common spaces.
So what do you do with this, this information?
So, it's a finding mechanism, so the maximum's $490 a day. At one point with one of those properties, we did reach the maximum of $490 a day because the property owner does not live in the city and was in a noncompliance state for a considerable period of time, and that did shut the operation down.
Okay, so does, when you identify these rooming houses, do you, it takes 30 days to get in there? You have to, you know, inform them that you're coming in? They can change everything? Is that what you have to do for the process of these rooming houses?
Yes, and now, the benefit to having this type of monitoring software is that it's advertised online, so the proof is right there. It's not an alleged rooming house. So you are able to see online that a property owner is advertising a bedroom for rent in a two-family house, and that the kitchen, the bathroom, would be shared spaces. So, we do have proof from, provided by the owner in that scenario. So, yes, it could take 30 days to physically get into the property, but to start enforcement action of posting a cease and desist and issuing a fine for not complying with the short-term rental ordinance, that's immediate.
So, I would suggest that a communication with the Revere police go into effect, you know, from maybe the chief on down to you, because my, what I'm hearing from the police are they're very skeptical and afraid to go into rooming houses. There's one on Green Street or Pratt Street. I don't know if you, you know, have identified it, but I think there's more rooming houses in the city that you are not aware of. And I think, just for the safety of the police, because that's what they're saying when they get calls. They're afraid to go in these houses because they, you know, there's multiple rooms, and they don't know who's going to come out. So, I would suggest that, going forward, that maybe you could have some sort of communication with the Revere police that, and find out if, you know, if there's more rooming houses than you have identified, if that's possible.
So, that is an interesting point. So, in terms of the rooming houses that I identify through the short-term rental office, that's because they're advertising the rooms for rent of 30 days or less, making it a short-term rental. That's how I'm able to take enforcement action, because it's considered a short-term rental, and then, or the rental of a bedroom. So, that isn't allowed under my ordinance. In terms of rooming houses throughout the city, if they're not being offered for rent for less than 30 days, I can't take specific enforcement action. I can refer it over to inspectional services. But in terms of having communication with the police department, we have had communication on several instances for parties and things of that nature, but in terms of sharing data on alleged rooming houses, potential rooming houses, I would be more than happy to share any information that I may have with the police, and I'll follow up on that.
And vice versa, too. So, I hope they can give you that information, too. Thank you.
Definitely, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Great job, Vin. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we go on to Chapter 402, I'd just like to share, the city of Revere lost two lifelong residents over the past week. Rosemary Roggerio was a longtime employee of the city, lifelong city, she were, lifelong city resident. She worked in the Veterans Department and the city's Clerk's Office under John Henry and Ashley Melnick. Also, Theodora Teddy Mantilla is her friends and family owner, a lifelong resident. Also did many years in the Water Department for the Veterans, senior work off, and was a longtime staple in Ward Three Poles as a pole volunteer. The city lost two amazing women over the past week. And if you could all just join me in a moment of silence, thank you. Thank you very much. If you are a Revere resident and want to speak under Chapter 402, please come before here. You have two minutes to speak on any motion. Please give your name, your address, and the motion number you'd like to speak on, and you have two minutes. Revere residents, please.
Mr. President?
Counselor?
Just a quick question. We have a motion on today, and this would normally be the time that they would come up and speak, but because I asked them to appear in the motion, we have the Revere Teachers Association here, would they speak during public comment, or can they speak when we call the motion? Since they're part of the motion, just curious.
They can speak during the motion.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, ma'am.
Thank you. Mary Gandolfo, 619 Washington, every via. So, one thing I wanted to mention is about the term limits. I was wondering if there's a way that we can vote separately on different term limits? In other words, we could vote on the mayor's term limit separate from city councilors, wanting city councilor's term limit, because the way it's written now, you're voting, if you want term limits on each committee, or, you know, and you may not want a long-term limit on the city council, but you may want a shorter-term limit for the mayor. So, I'm just saying if that can be changed, because people have different ideas on different, on council. You know, the council helps us, as opposed to the mayor's office. So, that's my, what I was wondering about that. I actually have a brand-new sidewalk that's all cracked, and I'm not getting any help with it. Any help with it. Brand-new. You paid for it. I paid for it. We all paid for my sidewalk. It's all cracking, and I can't get help at all from the city. Or the mayor's office, nothing, okay? A very weak response back. And we paid a lot of money for the sidewalk. We paid a construction company that's known to do this work. It's very, very disheartening for me and my husband, who's a longtime veteran. He's a Vietnam veteran, and this is breaking his heart. It's very frustrating, let me tell you. So that's one thing. And the other thing that I do want to ask about, the benefits for the HYM tax break. I'm really not a fan of the HYM tax break, because I understand, you know, we need money for the school. I do understand that, and it's just that, you know, everybody who has a family are themselves seniors, retirees. Everyone's having a hard time right now. We're all cutting back. We're not buying filet mignon and going out to eat three times a week. So maybe HYM needs to cut back their budget, you know, not ask us for so much. Really, it's a lot. And I think it's coming out of our pockets, and I can't even get a sidewalk refixed that was supposed to be 100% beautiful, really. So, I'm not really for this HYM giveaway. I feel like it is a giveaway, I'm sorry. And those things that they're saying, they have additional community benefits, concerts and, you know, whatever. I know the labor for the Suffolk Downs, I do agree with the labor for the construction people, okay. But I don't go to concerts, and I know a lot of people that don't. I think they can do a little better on that part also, for benefits to us. And the, yeah, I was wondering if Counselor McKenna, if you could add Squire Road and Route One North and South to your motion for cleaning up the highway. It's a mess, junk garbage everywhere. I feel like cleaning it myself. My husband sweeps the sidewalk three times a week, by the way. You'll ask anybody who walks by, they always say, "Thank you so much. You're the only people who clean up." What do we get for it? Nothing. And, and just, I do agree with the reducing the cost for the high school as much as we possibly can. I'm not saying make it weak, but we might not have all the bells and whistles, because, trust me, you guys have a second job. A lot of us don't. We can't do it. I take care of three family members who are elderly. I don't have time for myself, never mind get a second job. So, think about all that, please. I appreciate it, because you guys are the ones who help us.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Name, address, and motion number, please.
Anthony Cutler, 111 Breeden Lane, motion 23. I understand that this motion is about securing a certain threshold of funding so that people in the school system, teachers maintain jobs and students maintain education. I was just wondering if we could potentially make recommendations in terms of budget allocation, you know, in terms of the type of education students are receiving. I was just wondering if we could emphasize vocational studies, just to allow kids to explore more options. The median age for many of these trade jobs is, has been increasing for quite some time. Students are not encouraged to participate in that type of work, so if that's something that the budget could go towards, potentially, some of it at least, I think that'd be a great idea for the students to maximize their potential. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cutler.
Counselors, good afternoon. My name is Martin, Martin Sanchez, and I'm here just to support the HYM Suffolk Down project. I lived in 103 Warwick Street in the city of Rivera for almost 15 years, and I believe this project is going to create job opportunity for the families of the community, which is, and this administration is going down every day, every day, and every day. So that project, it would be great for this city, and hopefully that you guys can understand that from the working-class people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Name, address, and motion?
Good evening. Stephen Daviano Jr., 172 Prospect Ave. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of 25-148. I'm in support of this motion, because even though we're facing a tight budget with the schools and education, the ones on the front lines, the teachers, they deserve job security. They're the ones out there every single day, doing the job every single day, and they deserve to know that they're going to have a job when they wake up tomorrow. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Council. My name is Jane Chapin, and I'm the co-president of the Revere Teachers Association. And tonight, I'm here to, I'm joined by educators in Revere, and we're here to talk on motion 23. And so, we're here tonight because we are deeply concerned about budget cuts. We're deeply concerned about the behind-the-scenes emails and the rubblings about budget cuts for the next school year, which have left many of us with more questions than answers. We're demanding transparency and accountability, especially when it comes to decisions. We're demanding transparency and accountability, especially when it comes to decisions that affect the working conditions of our educators and the learning conditions of our students. The RTA is clear, any decisions that are made about our jobs need to be made with Revere teachers in the room. Educators must be part of this process. We must be part of the discussion. We need to be at the table, and our voices need to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Robert Wentworth. I live at 37 Alice Street in Revere, and I'm here in support of the H-Y-M Suffolk Downs project for the jobs that it'll bring to Revere. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, from the Council. My name is Marcel G. Lima. I'm living 38 Cambridge Street, graduated from Revere High, 2008, also serving the military, Marine, and I'm here for the H-Y-M in the Suffolk Down. I agree with the, we should like have more, more jobs favoring us, and you guys can do that for us, okay? Appreciate it.
Thank you, and thanks for your service.
How you doing? My name is Jorge Lopera, 196, month and a half, Revere. I fully support the H-Y-M. It's gonna benefit me and my family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Claudia Durango, 234 Lincoln Street, and I'm here for support Suffolk Down, and I'd like to work in my city. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Madam Clerk?
Unfinished business, calendar item number six, communication from the Chief of Planning and Community Development relative to a tax increment exemption agreement between the City of Revere and H-Y-M Investment Group, LLC.
Good evening, Counselors.
Good evening, Tom.
Tom Skarsky, 281 Broadway, joined here by Mayor Keefe to discuss the tax increment exemption agreement between the city and H-Y-M. I submitted a memo as well as a final and a red-line version of the tie agreement to the Council, admittedly right before the Council meeting. Apologies for my procrastination. I hope you won't vote me off the island tonight, but I did my best, waiting until the ink was dry, on, you know, negotiations that we've really underwent since our last meeting on April 28th until hours before today, to make sure that we had an agreement in front of you that we felt like was in the best interests of the city, the best interests of the workers that just spoke tonight, as well as H-Y-M and our shared goal of helping to build Portico. So just to outline a few key elements of the agreement, the red-line changes are pretty significant appearing, but in terms of the actual terms of that 15-year tie agreement, it's unchanged. A lot of the verbiage that was adjusted was really just legal maneuvering between various councils and H-Y-M and our review from HLC, but it's still a 15-year agreement at 50%. It still maintains a sunset clause by which if construction does not commence by November of this year, the agreement will expire. The only real significant change was the abatement term, where abatements could not be sought, changed from 10 years to 15 years. So the tie agreement is relatively unchanged. I think what we have, a lot more information to share with you, and what was included in the memo that I presented to you this evening was the broader terms of a development agreement that we'll be signing hand-in-hand with this tax increment exemption agreement that the mayor will be signing, I should say. So just to outline a few of the key details, we now have a $5.2 million set of payments that will be coming back to the city. That's 1.2 million more than what was originally discussed in April, so appreciate the Council's advocacy and working on behalf of the city and our residents to make sure we're getting the maximum benefit for the city. It includes a $100,000 signing bonus, for lack of a better term, that will be provided to the city at commencement of construction or at November 30th, 2025, whichever happens first. And then another key change that was made here, and this was in response to your comments at the last meeting about, well, great if we have shovels in the ground, but we actually need to get this project completed. So we look to actually tie the last two years of the term to substantial completion of the project. So essentially, if this project, Portico, does not get completed by November of 2028, years 14 and 15 of this agreement would essentially go away. So those would be a pretty significant benefit that would be lost to H-Y-M if they don't move quick enough, as we'd all like them to move. We are securing a similar commitment on the hotel, which is another critical piece of the puzzle for this development. The tickets, as discussed before, there'll be 20 per concert, with the exception of Teddy Swims, which there'll be 10 tickets. I don't know who that is, but that, I guess, means they're really popular, and so not only is it the first concert, but it's the most popular, and I believe it's already sold out. So we'll have all those tickets distributed to the Public Health Department, which can then utilize the proceeds to support the Public Health Emergency Relief Fund. There will be a 10% commitment for working hours to go towards Revere workers on this project, which actually is a significant difference from the original agreement, which looked at a 10% commitment for Revere and Boston residents. So it's actually a sizable goal increase that we're working towards to ensure that all the folks that spoke tonight and many more like them will be working on this project. Then there also is a 1.5% net proceeds clause, that if this project is sold within the first 10 years of this agreement, 1.5% of the net proceeds will be given back to the city. And then a few items related to reasonable efforts on projects that we have began collaboration on. So the first is the idea of a commercial food incubator at Suffolk Downs. As some of you might know, we received a $2 million earmark a few years back to pursue a shared commercial kitchen incubator. We're currently looking at that in the basement of the McKinley, but through this discussion, we opened up the idea of citing that at Suffolk Downs. There's some important details to sort through, so we can't make a firm commitment today, but what this would allow us to do is actually free up the basement of the McKinley School Rehabilitation Project for other uses, like offices for our parking department, offices for other departments in the city that, in which they're needed, but also I think this could be a significant economic development driver at Suffolk Downs that we're really excited about, and H-Y-M is really excited about. So we're committed to working on that, as well as, and this is an area where I'm not gonna speak too technical, but in pursuance of the city's consent decree, there is an opportunity to pursue a shared solution for a regional pumping station that would benefit both the cities of Revere and Boston, but also H-Y-M, and we'll be working hand-in-hand with H-Y-M to pursue that solution if it's viable, which could help us accelerate our consent decree timeline. And then, you know, at the end of the day, this is a significant agreement, and we all appreciate that, but I think it's one that makes necessary concessions to get this project up and running, but also gives us some really important front-loaded benefits to the City of Revere, and ultimately gets shovels in the ground, so we get folks working, so we get tax revenue, $18 million over the course of this 15-year agreement. So it's a significant deal. We feel great about it. I know we've got folks from H-Y-M that are happy to take any questions if you have them, as are we. Mayor, do you have any other comments?
No, I just wanted to say thank you, Tom. Tom spent a lot of time over the last, since the last Council meeting with our consultants and H-Y-M's consultants, working out the letter of this deal. Obviously, through your advocacy, we were able to go back to the partnership at H-Y-M and bolster the financial incentives and the labor agreement that we wanted to make sure that we put more union bodies from Revere on the project, and we'll monitor and manage that, as we did in the past, but with even more strength this time. So the crux of the deal are very much, as we said, improved from $4 million to approximately $5.2 million, with a couple other ancillary incentives as well. And I'm not expecting the, you know, the body to follow themselves for concert tickets, but again, those are some ancillary items that we will, you know, put into the Public Health Department. They will auction off, as they have in the past. You know, the estimated value could be in the tune of, and this is every year, so in the tune of, you know, between $25,000, $50,000 a year that will help that Emergency Relief Fund, that, you know, quite frankly, one, two emergencies, it runs dry. So I know that, and I'll just remind everyone, this is not something that we planned on five years ago. This isn't something we planned on even two years ago, but the, if anyone isn't paying attention, the state of the economy has very much been a very sluggish stall since late 2023, and it hasn't gotten a lot better. We are looking to bolster that. We have an obligation to everyone in the city to get the cranes back up and get things moving. And I'll just say that this isn't just a Revere issue, this is the entire, this is the entire country, but certainly the Northeast has seen this sluggish trend. There are cities and towns that are unwilling to make these types of agreements, and they're facing serious consequences. The City of Revere has been certainly more forward-thinking over the last number of years to put ourselves in a better position, but it's still not easy, as mentioned, some of the rising costs and inflation, and of course, with some of the lack of growth in the region. But again, I think that we're ahead of the curve, and this is gonna continue to make us competitive for this one parcel, and I say "one parcel" because it's one high-rise construction building that will be the domino, the catalyst to the remainder of the project, which of course will be a large program over the next 15 to 20 years, and I hope to have your support this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselors? Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been sitting with the, from, with the city and with H-Y-M since 2017. We've gone through probably 100 meetings. I know that during this time, it's bad for every construction developer, because nothing's being, not even a shovel's going into the ground. I remember sitting with Tom at meetings, saying that this would be built by 2025. You know, we can't foresee the future, and this is the future right now. So any help I believe that the city can do and the council can do, I think, would be beneficial, because we do wanna get boots on the ground, we do wanna get shovels in the ground, and we wanna build this. This is very important for Revere. So you have my support tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cogliano?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm in full support of this. I do have one question. Section 5A, Number 4, lapse of construction start, it says sponsor has not commenced construction on the project by November 30th. Could you just, again, we kind of alluded to this last meeting, does this mean we're gonna put a shovel in the ground, or do they really have to start building this thing? So could we just get a little bit more elaboration on that?
So the, the goal there would be the pulling of building permit? I think that would be the definition. We're, we're working out in that separate agreement what that shared definition is. I think our way to help assure this will happen is both this coupled with the other clause, which effectively, if, if they don't get started, they're gonna miss that November 28 timeline. If they miss that timeline, they're talking about significant revenue loss with years 14 and 15. So, you know, we're, I think, having a good faith agreement as to what constitutes substantial, or what constitutes commencing of construction, but then that's our more effective clawback mechanism, if you will, later on, to make sure that they hold true to that.
Thank you. And voting this in tonight ensures that this building goes up, and it's only for one building, and it's gonna ensure that this is gonna be union-built, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Greenoswaya?
Thank you, Mr. President. I feel it's important to give H-Y-M a tax break on this next phase of the building project, because they're using 100% union labor. That commitment matters. It means living wages, worker protections, and reinvestment into our local workforce. By supporting H-Y-M with this tax incentive, we're not just encouraging economic development, we are reinforcing our city's values, fair labor, quality construction, and long-term community benefits, such as helping the working families. So I am in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hermio?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the mayor, you know, I'm rather disappointed by the timeline on how this played out. You know, we received these physical copies for this agreement less than an hour ago. The Council meeting had already started, and the digital copy, and I'm the only one who actually comes up here with a laptop, but the digital copy for my colleagues, by the way, got sent before, just before the meeting started. So I'm very disappointed in that, and I am, I am heartened by the fact that the administration, the mayor, and the developer have come back to the table, renegotiated some terms, and just because this was at such an untimely manner, I'm going to go for the, I'm gonna have, I have a lot of questions, and so we'll have to do a kind of a little thing here. So first, on your cover letter, the very first point, the payment to the city of $5.25 million to be paid before a series of project milestones, or by 2035, whichever happens first, this is an additional $1.1 million that was proposed. In your contract here, where do you make that amendment? And then if you can point me to your tracked changes document, which was emailed to us, where that amendment was made?
So the idea here is everything that's in that bulleted list will become effective in a separate agreement executed by the mayor, and reason being, the tie is a very prescriptive process for this one development. This is a more complicated legal mechanism that we're working with H-Y-M to develop, so it's not in the tie agreement. It's a commitment that you have from us, from H-Y-M, that this agreement is not going to be executed by the mayor until we have those same terms in front of us that we will be signing, but it's a separate agreement.
So I guess that prompts just another question. So are we, are we giving you a blank check to finalize the agreement? Is that, is that what we're understanding? Maybe not a blank check, but there's a, a structure here for the agreement, but there's no actual agreement. Am I understanding that incorrectly?
So Counselor, the, the tie, as mentioned from Tom's standpoint, the state really doesn't regulate what the separate terms are that we're negotiating. They really just want the nuts and bolts of the agreement, and we are, we are negotiating a side agreement that will be executed at the same time with our, with our specific terms, hence the $5.2 million and the other ancillary items. But we very much will have it structured and have the city protected, where, you know, you're not giving us a blank check, but there is a little bit of a trust process here to know that you're giving me the agreement to sign, given these broad terms, but not, by no means is it, is it, you know, I have, I have, I have an obligation to represent the city, represent you, but also my, my best interest to the cities, like you. What I will say is, we were literally negotiating five minutes before the Council meeting, up until five minutes before the Council meeting, to get to the finest points of the deal, hence why you got it so late in the game, but this is, as many of you have been probably talking to the group as well, and other people, other interested parties, up until, I would imagine, this weekend, or even today, we were, we were just, we just came to a finality about five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When did the negotiations start?
Oh, they've been ongoing for well over a month.
And when, when does H-Y-M need to get this tie in order for them to receive additional funding from the state?
So it's, it's already a week or so overdue. The, the agreement, the tie application, the HD application needed to be submitted by the end of April, so right now, we're basically working with HLC.
And who engaged who in the negotiations?
Well...
Did we engage H-Y-M, or did they engage us for this HD?
As soon as we had our HD district approved, we immediately engaged H-Y-M in that discussion. Before that, we wouldn't technically speak and be authorized to have this conversation.
But they came to the city to try to get the zoning, is that right?
That's correct.
And what date was that?
What date did they seek the, the district in the first place?
Correct.
My memory doesn't serve me well here, but it was in winter at some point in time?
Because now we're a day, well, maybe a week late on this agreement, on, for them to get their funding, and you're asking us to vote, and is there a hard deadline for tomorrow?
So if the council votes on this tonight, the intent would be, you're... So if the council votes on this tonight, the intent would be you're authorizing the mayor to sign this document in addition to yourselves, but the agreement would not be fully executed until the mayor signs it. He can sign it at his pleasure after this. It doesn't mean just because you vote today, he needs to sign.
I understand, but to submit to the state, is there a hard deadline for tomorrow?
There's not, I mean, there's a hard deadline to submit by tomorrow. Yes, that's how we've communicated it with HLC.
Okay. So now you're, so, okay, so that just adds to the timeline problems. Okay. But notwithstanding, let's keep going here. Point two. So you note $5.25 million in the first bullet point, and then $100,000 to be distributed at commencement of construction by November 30th, 2025. So there's two things I have, I want to address here. First, is this an additional $100,000 to the $5.25 million?
That's included in the $5.2.
So this is not an additional payment of $100,000. This is just what's included in your first bullet point. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then commencement of construction. I really do, and thank you to my colleague, Counselor Cogliandro, I really do have some questions there, because we're talking building, pulling a building permit here, and we're talking about construction, permits being pulled in November, November 30th, so two weeks before, three weeks before Christmas, two weeks, three weeks before the winter solstice, which I don't know if folks know, the winter solstice actually tells us that it gets a lot colder and the construction is a lot harder to do. So when are we actually expecting them to build? Because building permits on November 30th means that they're building in March, maybe, if we're lucky?
Right. So the commitment that we received from them was that we would have shovels in the ground in July. I think what this allows for is a little bit of a buffer, so this agreement doesn't sunset if shovels are in the ground August 15.
Yeah, but the buffer that you're asking us to approve, Tom, is two months, sorry, someone help me with the math here. 11 minus 7 is four months, actually 12 really, because November 30th. So you're talking about 12 minus 7. You're talking about five months after the quote commitment that's not written in ink anywhere in any of the documentation that you just shared with us. And then when the building permits are supposed to be pulled on November 30th, you're talking about possible construction, so let's see, December, January, February, March, at the soonest, you're talking about nine-month leeway, is what you're telling me. So it's not, you have a verbal commitment with them, great, but you actually don't have a written commitment with them for them for July, and we are talking about actual people, these folks that showed up to this meeting today, working on a site potentially until March? So, like, you're telling them they're going to wait till March? Is that what I'm understanding? Potentially?
You asking us that question?
Yeah, I'm asking you a question.
So the commitment is to pull the permits and before the end of this fiscal year, June 30th, and to start the building, to actually start construction no later than November 30th. Of course, that is, as we all know, the building season tends to wrap up shortly after that, probably around December. Obviously, there's things that can be done, but the goal would be to get them activated as soon as possible, but giving them a little leeway. If they decide to, again, if they have a certain period of time to complete this project, which, as you know, high-rise construction, seems like you know a little bit about construction, is going to take a lot more than 16 or 18 months. So if they do not commence or finalize this building by that timeline of 28, then they will lose two large years of this deal. So the goal for them would be to start as soon as possible, so they don't risk losing two years of the deal.
I understand that, Mr. Mayor, but Tom just answered to my colleague, Counselor Cogliandro, that construction is actually pulling the permits, not actual work. So this is where I'm asking for clarification.
Point of information, Mr. President, point of information.
State your point, Counselor.
So I just, just to clarify, construction is going up, but isn't there sewer pipes being laid down, water pipes being laid down, all this construction below the surface before we get up to the top? Isn't that going on now? Could you answer me that, please?
So I would defer to our partners at HYM on the specifics of that question. I'm not sure we would qualify that as commencing construction under this measure. And Counselor, to answer your question about the answer I provided earlier about pulling building permits, we need to find an objective measure that classifies when construction will commence. We could say a shovel in the ground, but then they could walk in and stick a shovel in the ground and call it a day. We could call it a certain number of working hours over a period of time, but, you know, you could poke holes in that as well. I think ultimately, this is our best effort to apply an objective measure to what the start of construction means, and if you have other ideas, we're welcome to hear them. But I think this also is about a trust that we have built over a long-term relationship with HYM over the course of the project, and they have looked, the council in the eyes, looked us in the eyes, and told us their aim is to start in July, and we are acting in good faith and partnership with them, and in doing so, provided a bit of a buffer here. It is not, I think, anyone's intent, as the mayor indicated, to start construction in November, because they will then not.
And I'm just, I'm asking these questions simply because I received, this is still hot off the presses, like my hands are burning with the heat of this printer here. Okay. So, but just for everyone that's listening out here, theoretically, best-case scenario, we got their verbal agreement that they're going to be hammering down that site by July. But worst-case scenario, we're looking at maybe one, two, three weeks of construction, and then they're coming back in March, or maybe not building at all and coming back in March. Is that correct?
A worst-case scenario is that nothing happens at all. That's the worst-case scenario.
No, that's not the question. The question is, if we approve this, which you and your administration have told us for three months, that if we approve this, they will construct, what I'm saying is, when we approve this, worst-case scenario is they start in March.
Worst-case scenario is they start in November, for me.
Okay. Well, that's not, that's not how I read this, but...
They're pulling the permits before the June, before, on or before June 30th. Can we?
That's not how I read that, but okay. So, all right. Aside from that, I think that's all of my questions, Mr. Mayor, and since I know that HYM is here, I'd actually like them to answer the same questions. I want to make sure that they have the same answers. So the first is, this $5.25 million, Mr. O'Brien, this is the deal that you've reached with the city?
Correct.
Okay. And for clarity, this $100,000 million, $100,000 that's in the mayor's office or the city's office around additional payments is just a typo, and it's already included in the $5.25. Is that right?
I'm not sure it's a typo, but it is a payment, yeah, that's part of the $5.25.
But it's not an additional payment, as it's stated here? Because it first says, yeah, yeah, so the additional, okay. Just clarifying again, and look, I'm in favor of this. I'm just asking all the questions because we got this 30 seconds ago. And then, as it relates to construction, you, they just told us that your aim is to start by July. Is that correct, Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah. We want to start this project as soon as possible this summer, if we can. So there's still a lot of work to do. We have a lot of people who are here depending on us and supporting us, but our intention is to begin it this summer.
Okay. And you're understanding that construction, kind of how Tom says, is actually pulling the permits?
If we pull the building permit for this, it requires a $2 million fee to be paid to the city. That's a big deal for us.
Yeah.
If we're pulling the permit, we're starting construction.
Okay. But that's the understanding, that it's when you pull the permits that construction's beginning?
I agree that what's needed is an objective measure. Pulling the building permit is a complete commitment to the project.
And that's what you've kind of negotiated with the mayor's office. Is that correct?
It's the objective start. I mean, as the counselor pointed out, you know, there are times when I've sat on that side of this microphone when people have promised to kind of do things, and they put a shovel out there and they start to do things, but the permit is an objective measure, and it's a $2 million item for us, so it's an expensive item.
Okay. I understand. Those are my questions, which are the same questions I asked the mayor. I appreciate you taking the time to come to the office.
Thanks, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hess.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think you see a lot of Revere residents here, a lot of union members. I love the idea of the city's relief fund, which I had a motion in when I first started trying to boost up a little bit. And the public health department had their auction, raised a lot of money. But as the mayor says, that fund is depleted within two or three travesties, you know, whether it's a fire or flood, that fund is depleted after a couple of uses. So I look at things, little, small benefits. You know, we get the relief funds boosted up a bit. We have a lot of Revere workers here, a lot of union workers. One question I did have is about the 10% commitment for Revere workers. I believe it was split between Boston and Revere before. I just want to make sure Revere doesn't have to make that up anywhere else. 10% commitment for Revere workers, it's just Revere, it's not Revere and Boston. I think it was 10% shared between Revere and Boston, so we're not going to have to give up anything elsewhere, right, to make that up?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Hess. Good. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Counselor Hermio actually spoke on a lot of the questions that I have. I do also want to reiterate, we just got this. It didn't give me a lot of time to go through this at all, and this is something that I would have liked to have had more time to look at and ask questions, and so I don't feel comfortable with that. With that being said, I am in full support of union work, and I want to make sure that we're taking care of our Revere union members. I'm in support of the project. I want to see it succeed. I want to put these guys to work. So my question is, why the November 30th date? Why can't we give these guys a commitment that shovels are going to get in the ground much sooner than that? Why can't we do a June 15th, or a June 30th, or a July 15th date to ensure, because I don't want them to be under the impression, I don't want our union workers to be under the impression that we signed this tonight and they're all going to be working in June or July, because that may not be the case. If the requirement is that a permit needs to be pulled by November 30th, then I agree. We're not looking at any real work here taking place until spring of 2026 hypothetically. And so I just don't want anyone to be misled. Forgive me, but I feel as though I was misled with some facts and the progress of work at this project here a year or so ago, when I was asking questions, and I really don't think I was given forthright answers. So I'm a little skeptical. I think this contract should be doing more. It should be giving more of a guarantee for our union work, and I would have liked to have had more time to go through it. And I do have one, another question. So that's my first question. Why does it have to be November 30th? Why can't it be sooner? I don't like the, the, who, the substantial completion, something has, something, you know, it says that, what constitutes substantial completion, and who's going to decide that for years 14 and 15, for that payment to go down to zero? So what percentage of that is going to be substantial? Is it 90% complete, 80% complete? I don't see that defined anywhere.
So I'll take the second question first, simplest. So substantial completion would be the receipt of a temporary occupancy permit for the site. So basically, once folks are actually eligible to move into Portico. And as to the first question, you know, I think the economic uncertainty that we're sitting with today, the economic uncertainty we were sitting with months ago before the tariffs hit, and then were taken away and then put back on again, and all of the uncertainty that created, this is a project, you know, it's high-rise construction, it has steel, which, you know, is a big cost item, that there's a great deal of uncertainty behind it. The financial markets are somewhat in disarray, and so I think, again, this is understanding that we have a partnership with HYM, a long-term partnership, that we do have to maintain a level of trust and understanding with our partners on this. We've received a commitment of, prior to the end of the fiscal year, pulling building permits and starting construction shortly thereafter. I think, you know, we could pick apart the details as to the date of the start of construction, but I think what Mr. O'Brien mentioned is true. If you're pulling building permits for $2 million worth of work, and then you're not working for six months, that's not only bad for the city of Revere.
But that's not my, right, I understand that, but that's not my question. In other words, that's $2 million that they're going to have to put out by November 30th and then start work in the spring. My question is, why can't that be sooner? Why can't that be in June or July? Why does it have to be a date out in November?
Thanks very much. If I could, I just want to correct a misimpression that was created earlier. The payment of a building permit fee would be a project-level expense. So the idea would be that the payment of the building payment fee comes out of the lender and the equity and all the other folks. When we close on the project, we begin that day. In fact, we'll probably begin the project prior to the closing of it. It is not true, you're referring to public projects, you know, water, sewer, those sorts of things. For our projects, we've begun plenty of projects and worked through the winter. I think if you ask the folks who were in this room, there've been plenty of days in the winter when people have worked. The issue is doing site work, concrete pouring, things like that. Our intention is to begin this project this summer, but to the extent that it begins in the fall, we're still beginning that project right away, that next day. It is not true that we're going to close on the financing and sit around for three months or four months and just wait to start in the spring. That is not true.
But why a November date, then? If everything's going to start?
We need until that period of time, because we have to complete the documents with the lender. This is an important vote for us, to plug in for the financing, to make sure that we can close now with the lender, close with the equity providers. We have to complete the documents for that. There's a ton of work that needs to happen that will take a number of months.
All those months?
It will take some weeks to get it done.
Weeks, but we're talking nine?
We're trying to give ourselves room. The last thing we want to do is have this transaction blow up by November 30th.
And you, now, you are going to be getting incentives from the state as well, correct? How much would that?
That's part of what we're struggling to try and make sure that we get.
And do you have a figure on that?
Approximately $15 million was created in the housing bond.
Okay. And so you've said on a number of occasions that you've already invested $600 million into this site, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. So this is where I'm struggling with this. Number one, I don't think it's strong enough language in here to protect our union workers. I'd like to see the dates tightened up. I'd like to see definitions tightened up. It's just too, the language is just too loose for me. And the other thing is that, right now, I really have an obligation too to focus and protect taxpayers. We've got a lot going on in the city right now. We've got a lot going on with budget, we're seeing school departments, we just heard, were operating at a $7.3 million deficit. So it's difficult for me to look at this, maybe $10, $11 million that we're talking here, $15 million from the state, maybe we're talking a total of $20 to $26 million all total, on a 600, on an investment, a project that $600 million has already been invested into. To me, that doesn't seem like a lot of money. It doesn't seem like it should be a make-or-break factor for this project. But that amount of money is a lot for us, considering that we just heard the school department's operating at a $7.3 million deficit. So it's a tough thing for me to grapple with, but I have an obligation to be fiscally responsible to the taxpayers as well, so I don't know if I'm going to be able to support this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Agenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think Mr. O'Brien answered my first question. I've seen a lot of projects over the last few years. I haven't seen any construction stoppage during the winter. There's large projects down the beach. I know years ago, that used to be a thing, you stopped in the winter, but from what I understand, and maybe the union members can clarify, they seem like they do construction all the way through the winter. So I'm not concerned that it's going to stop for six months. Maybe you can give us your, when the Amaya was built, what happened? Was there a stoppage all winter?
No, no. I mean, honestly, I think the folks here in this room would say it's a point of pride to go to work every single day. And, you know, we built a ton of buildings. We built an 800-foot-tall tower in the midst of downtown Boston. It took us three years to build that. I have an amazing picture that I'll send to you of a member of Local 7, the ironworkers, at the top of that building on a day that was, I forget what the actual temperature was, but believe me, it was way below freezing, and proudly laying the steel on that building. I'm in awe of the work that people do, and they do not stop in the winter, period.
Okay, thank you. So I'm fully supportive of this. I know a lot of things were said over the last few years, but basically, for Revere, this project has to thrive. You know, our financial future depends on it. I think HYM, especially with their commitment from day one for union labor, I think that's the, it's the only project in Revere that has committed to union labor, and I'd just like to see that it gets started, the project thrive. I know things have been said over the last few years, but a lot has happened in the economy, and for this project to continue on, I think is a testament to Mr. O'Brien and HYM, and I'm in full support of it. and I'm in full support of it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I consider myself the fiscal conservative on this body. Now, that's, you know, maybe that's ego or whatever, but I've always found myself to be the protector of the taxpayer. And I find myself voting against some things that I felt were wrong for the taxpayer. I've been involved in all, any TIFs that were ever involved here in the city. We had the Neco TIF. I fought for the Market Basket TIF. That's, probably goes down in history as one of the best TIFs ever given out anywhere, not just in the city of Revere. That turned a hellhole into a beautiful active mall. In fact, we wish we had more room so we could park more cars. But that being said, being a fiscal conservative doesn't mean that I'm not, that I'm cheap. I look at things, and I look at the needs. And this project right now is at a stage, and it's not because of anything except where we are in the economy, with the interest rates, and you just, it's almost impossible to get funding, especially for a project like this. I've looked at the pros and cons of this, and this project needs to continue right now, right away. Because if it doesn't, we're going to be deeper in the fiscal hole, and that's not what the taxpayers need now. I've had people say to me, "You're going to give a tax break to Suffolk Down? Are you crazy, you?" And I have to look at everything. I have to look at what, what happens if this sits for another year and a half? What's the consequences of that? And it's just, it's not palatable, and it's not good for the city and the taxpayer. It's a common sense approach at this point, to support this. Yeah, we, you know, we ask for some little more give back, and I think that's good. But the bottom line is, this will jump-start this project. That's what the city needs. And so me, as the fiscal conservative, is going to support this TIF agreement, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors. Any other Counselors? Permission to speak from the chair? Thank you. So this has been a contentious debate now for a month or so, and I first want to commend the mayor, Tom, Tom O'Brien and his team. They have sat with me several times over the past two weeks to get this done. I've met with the carpenters, I've met with the laborers, I've met with the mayor, and all the unions are fully in support of this here. The workers in the room, you know, I understand that the feet to the fire, I'm working, but when it starts, it's 20 years of work, no matter how we look at it. And right now, we're worried about the taxpayer. And I can guarantee, as Counselor Zambudo said, if we do not jump-start this project now, we will be going to the taxpayer to help us. We will have to do that if we don't get our economy going. Our city has made tremendous strides over the past eight, 10 years. We have a brand-new D P W. We're building a brand-new high school. We have brand-new fire stations. But all those come with cost. And the cost is to work with a developer to make a tall-rise building structures go into the city of Revere, first time ever. Biggest project in mass history, I believe. And we have it coming to Revere. So if we have to give them a little bit of a break, I say we do it, and I'm fully in support of this tonight. Okay. Madam Clerk. Roll call the members, please.
Shall the City Council approve the tax increment exemption agreement between the city of Revere and S D R3 Owner LLC? Counselor Agenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Grino Sawaya.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hermio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly.
No.
No, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, the tie agreement has been approved.
Thank you. Do we have a second call on that? Back to the regular order.
Next up is the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee Report.
Counselor Agenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. There were several motions before us tonight. The first one was an ordinance further amending the revised ordinance relative to open meeting rules. This pertains to the Ways and Means Committee meeting, the budget hearings. These will be conducted during the day hours. We looked at this, we voted favorably on it, and I ask for a roll call to look on this favorably.
Actually, Counselor, before we move on to that, I actually, I misspoke. We need to suspend the rules. Can we get a roll call, Madam Clerk, under the suspension of rules in hopes that does not prevail?
Sir President, do you want to inform the parties before they all leave?
No, it's just a roll call.
This is a roll call to suspend rules. Counselor Agenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Grino Sawaya.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hermio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo. Is absent, and Counsel President Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes.
On the suspension of rules, all in favor, all opposed?
Mr. President.
Counselor.
On the last item, reconsideration in hopes it does not prevail.
Madam Clerk.
On immediate reconsideration?
On medium reconsideration, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered. Regular order of business.
Next up is the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee Report.
Counselor Agenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item before us was amending the Revere revised ordinances relative open meetings. It pertains to the Ways and Means Committee budget hearings, which will be conducted during the day. We voted favorably on that, and I ask for a roll call to vote on this favorably.
Madam Clerk? Yep. Ordered on a second reading. All in favor, all opposed? Ordered on a third and final reading. All in favor, all opposed? Request for a roll call for engrossment and ordainment. Madam Clerk.
Shall the City Council approve an ordinance further amending open meeting rules? Counselor Agenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Grino Sawaya.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
No.
No, Counselor Hermio.
No.
No, Counselor Kelly.
No.
No, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance is engrossed and ordained.
The second item before us was an ordinance establishing rules and regulations for the veteran property tax work-off abatement program. We looked on this favorably, and I'd like to call for a roll call to look on it favorably.
Mr. President.
Counselor.
Mr. President, thank you for the time. I did speak at the committee meeting, and of course, I don't have a problem with this. I was a little upset when the policy writer mentioned that Reserve and National Guard people are second-hand people, second-hand military people, the way she said DD-214 people come first, and then we'll think about doing the N G B 22 form, which still shows that a veteran is a veteran is a veteran. A veteran's definition was established back with President Obama. Anybody with 20 years or more is considered a veteran. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts just last year reaffirmed that. And I don't know why we can't reaffirm it here by allowing someone to show their N G B 22 that they're a veteran, other than their DD-214. So I would like to make an amendment to this, that the N G B 22 form be allowed as identification as a veteran and proof of being a veteran. I was very disturbed at the way that was put forward to us, and I didn't appreciate being put back on a second-hand position, that we all wore the uniform, we all spent time doing our duty, protecting our country. I was very, very upset the way she put that forward. So I would ask that a substitute motion be included, that an N G B 22 be included in that policy. Thank you.
Point of personal privilege. Counselor, I agree with you. Anyone that dons the military uniform is a true hero. Where we have to disagree is a National Guard member who may not have earned the veteran status through service, injury, or deployment, would not qualify as a veteran in the state of Massachusetts. Now, you are correct. When Obama did leave the office, he did change the law. Under any veteran that served in the National Guard with 20 years of service, could use the title "veteran" that did not equate them to get the veterans' benefits. They still don't qualify for voc rehabilitation. They still don't qualify for a ton of VA benefits. And so I, although I honor and respect every National Guard member, I do understand where they're coming from. Now, as I stated last week, a National Guard member who has been severely disabled, who presents a N G B 22 showing he's been severely disabled because of his duty to the country, and was a National Guard member, would absolutely be honored under this tax break.
Mr. President.
Counselor.
The way you put it was, if somebody had 20 years of service, they still should be entitled to veterans' benefits. They get them now, and I can't see why not, why we can't give them here in the city of Revere.
Counselor, what veterans' benefits do, can you name me, and I hate to do this publicly, but can you name me a veteran benefit that someone gets just because they're 20 years of service?
Offhand, no, because the first time you're giving it to me, not throwing it at me.
Well, that's because it doesn't exist, Counselor. A veteran with 20 years of service can use the title "veteran." They can use that title, and we should respect them, and we should honor them for their service. But I have to be honest. A veteran who did 20 years in the National Guard is not the same as a guy who goes and does 13 months overseas. I'm sorry, I can't agree with you there, and that's why veterans' benefits are for veterans' benefits. And that's why someone with 22 years of service is a distinguished service member. They are honored, and that's why the President of the United States said they could use the title "veteran," but that does not qualify them while using that title for veterans'
I totally disagree with you, Mr. President.
It's not our opinion, Counselor. It's not our opinion, Counselor. This is federal law.
Counselor, I let you speak, and I would hope that you let me finish.
But you're using his opinion. You want your opinion to be true.
Put your mic on.
Counselor, I let you speak, and I would appreciate you allowing me to finish what I had to say. You said your piece, and I want to say mine. I think it's very disrespectful, what was said. You know, it's still something we can still give to someone here in the city of Revere that wore the uniform for 20 years or more, whether he went overseas or not. And I think it's a small thing that we can give our veterans here in the city of Revere by allowing them to get a small tax break. So I still put my motion in as a substitute motion, that the N G B 22 form be included in this policy.
Okay, Counselor. Madam, can you read the Counselor's amendment to the motion, please?
Counselor Novoselsky, just to qualify, just to clarify, Section 2.92.030 application
2.920.030, Section A.
Section A for 1, 2, and 3?
1 and 2. I'm sorry, just 1.
Just number 1. Thank you.
Mr. President, point of inquiry.
State your point, Counselor.
Thank you. This is out of my realm of expertise, and I really don't know what you guys are talking about too much in regards to who's allowed, but you stated that this is federal law, yes? So if that's the case, how can we vote on this? And it's not that I don't, I want to be respectful to both Counsel Silvestri and Counsel Novoselsky. I just, I don't want to make a mistake of voting on something we shouldn't be voting on. If, I don't know if this needs a legal review or what.
Mr. President.
Counselor.
Through you, through you, the Counselor. The word "veteran" is federal, and it is state. It is our choice as a city if we want to give a veteran with 20 years or more a tax break in a work, into the work-off program. That, you know, we're not, I don't think, I don't believe we're violating any law if we do it. It's just something that we want to do internally at the city of Revere.
Mr. President, if I may have some leeway, so you're sure that we're okay to do this, and we can modify this at the city level without essentially breaking the law? Because I...
I don't know that.
That's my concern, and it's not that I don't think people deserve or don't deserve this, I just want to be sure that none of us are getting jammed up.
Mr. President, through you.
Counselor.
This is a city ordinance that we're putting together.
Ordinance is not statute, though, Counselor.
I understand that, but it's a below, it's a below statute, and it's below federal. It's something that we could do locally. There's a lot of things we do locally that, I don't say counter, or they don't overreact to the federal or state rules. And that's where I believe we are.
Mr. President.
Counselor.
Can we table this?
I think we should table it and get an opinion, to be honest, before we vote on it, but I'm not going to get into a back-and-forth.
Motion to table.
Madam Clerk. Motion to table, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered. Counselor.
I was just hoping that we could suspend the rules to take Item 15 out of order, which is relative to the CBA between the city and units A and B, which I believe is our D P W workers and some of our clerical workers who have to be called. I think we have...
We're just going to continue, Counselor. Thank you. Madam Clerk, we got to finish Legislative Affairs, I believe.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. The third item before us was an ordinance further amending free cash distributions to the stabilization fund. Mr. Vizcay spoke before us when we voted in favor of this, and I'd like to call for a roll call in favor. Roll call in favor.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay. Ordained on a second reading? Ordered on a second reading? Ordered on a third and final reading? Roll call for engrossment and ordainment.
Shall the City Council approve an ordinance further amending free cash distributions to stabilization funds? Counselor Agenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Grino Sawaya.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly, I mean, sorry, Counselor Hermio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance is engrossed and ordained. Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel President Sylvesteri?
Yes.
Yes. The ordinance is engrossed and ordained.
The fourth item before us was a motion by President Sylvesteri about term limits. He has chosen to withdraw that, and we tabled it. So, I'm, excuse me, placed on file. So I don't know if we need a roll call for that, or?
Placed on file, all in favor, all opposed?
Great. Thank you. And the last item before us was a motion by Counselor Kelly and President Sylvesteri to move term limits to a non-binding ballot question this November. We had some discussion on this, and we voted in favor of this. So I'd like to call for a roll call to look at this favorably.
Thank you, Counselor. Ordered on a second reading? So, motion? Roll call the members, Madam Clerk.
Shall the city council approve for placement on the November 25 municipal election ballot a non-binding public advisory opinion question relative to term limits for elected officials? Counselor Agenzio?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino?
No.
No. Counselor Garino-Sowaya?
Nope.
No. Counselor Haas?
No.
No. Counselor Hermio?
No.
No. Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel President Sylvesteri?
Yes.
Yes. The ordinance is engrossed and ordained.
The fourth item before us was a motion by President Sylvesteri about term limits. He has chosen to withdraw that, and we tabled it. So, I'm, excuse me, placed on file. So I don't know if we need a roll call for that, or?
Placed on file, all in favor, all opposed?
Great. Thank you. And the last item before us was a motion by Counselor Kelly and President Sylvesteri to move term limits to a non-binding ballot question this November. We had some discussion on this, and we voted in favor of this. So I'd like to call for a roll call to look at this favorably.
Thank you, Counselor. Ordered on a second reading? So, motion? Yeah. Roll call the members, Madam Clerk.
Shall the city council approve for placement on the November 25 municipal election ballot a non-binding public advisory opinion question relative to term limits for elected officials? Counselor Agenzio?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino?
No.
No. Counselor Garino-Sowaya?
Nope.
No. Counselor Haas?
No.
No. Counselor Hermio?
No.
No. Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel President Sylvesteri?
Yes.
Yes. The appointments have been confirmed. Next up is Communications. Calendar item number 15, Communication from the CFO Relative to the Unit A and Unit B Memorandum of Agreements Covering the Period of July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2028.
Mr. Viskey.
Good evening, Council. Richard Viskey, City CFO, 281 Broadway. We, the city and representatives from Unit A and Unit B of Local 22 have come to a memorandum of agreement for a three-year contract that would start July 1, 2025, and extend three years. And the terms of the MOAs are before you, and I'm here to answer any questions on those agreements, and I urge you to vote in the favor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Viskey. Counselor Agenzio. Hermio.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to first thank the members of, of our city, our workers of our city, who have ratified this contract and, you know, let them know that they have my support and that I'm looking forward to having this contract approved by the council. Of course, the members of Local 22, who live and work in our city, do an incredible job, and I wish them well with this new CBA. And I think they're here to speak, so I don't really have any questions.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Agenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. I fully support Unit A and Unit B. I just have one question. I know a while ago you hired the former HR director to do a salary survey for the Unit B members. How did that salary survey came out? What did that reflect in this agreement?
Yeah, through the, we threw the salary survey, and we also, what we did through that process is rewrite all the job descriptions of the Unit B employees. And with that, again, through negotiations, we've adjusted some of the classifications of jobs and otherwise, but, you know, it was definitely a worthwhile event and helped us set the market for those particular positions.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm fully supporting this tonight. I do have a couple of questions. Bear with me. So, so from what I'm seeing, there's a 20-year step built in to Unit A, the Unit A contract. Section H of the appendix says that elected officials and folks in the legislative branch get ongoing raises based on whatever the unions negotiate. Since the city clerk is considered a department head within the legislative branch, she should be getting those same base salary increases, correct?
That's been quite a question today, and I think what's unique about the two contracts that you'll vote tonight is that, in, at least since my tenure here in the city, Unit A and Unit B have been pretty consistently negotiated with the same calls and not many terms have changed. This particular contract, there are some variations between Unit A and Unit B, which will certainly affect that language as well as the exempts. And I think because that new language was put in there, and they reference Local 22, it didn't say Unit A or Unit B, so I think that might be something that has to be vetted out through Legislative Affairs, but I tend to agree with the logic. I think there's some clarification that's needed done before we execute anything like that.
And that would include the 20-year step, and I think it's the one-time $1,000 bump and all that?
Yeah, again, it's, you know, with, with the legislative body, there's no steps for the mayor or council. It does indicate if the clerk and the assistant clerk and some of that. And then, you know, there's the exempt employees, too, which, if you look at it, some would be considered, I'm sure, management, and some would be considered hourly. So we got a little bit of homework to do once this is passed, but I don't foresee a huge problem, but just want to kind of make it clear. We spent a lot of time last year revising that ordinance, and I just want to make it crystal clear, so probably be some questions for the solicitor and such.
All right. Thank you. And how many employees or positions would be eligible this year for that 20-year step? Do you know off the top of your head?
I think within the first fiscal year, there's maybe one or two, but then there's a couple that may hit that step in the years 2 and 3 of the contract, but there's not very many in Unit A that would actually have that. There's actually probably more within the exempt than the legislative. But it was, it wasn't a big, wasn't a big hit. Most of the department heads are not new relatively, but not a lot of 20-plus years. So there's at least one or two I can think of.
And when will the parity salary ordinance be submitted for consideration for non-union employees and positions?
Probably as soon as we figure out how to fix this language in the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Viskey.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other, Counselor Agenzio?
Just one follow-up question. The Unit B employees weren't interested in the 20-year step?
I mean, they were interested in a lot of things, Counsel, but we negotiated, and they, what they have is a 1% raise on the last day of the contract, which is unique to Unit A. And like I said, there were some classifications that were moved around within that schedule, so, you know, they don't always have identical needs. And through the negotiation process, again, there was one or two people that got a 20-year step in Unit A, but there was probably a lot more and a lot more financial impact in Unit B, so some of that leads to where we end up when we ultimately agree to an MOA.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Also, Counselor? Any other counselors? Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know a lot of hard work goes into these negotiations, and everybody can't be pleased. But, you know, I want to congratulate you for getting this done. Bottom line is that we have some, a little work to do to clean up some things that didn't get in here, and we can do that in the near future. So, again, congratulations to all the hard work that went into this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Madam Clerk? For the first roll call, we have two.
Shall the city council approve the appropriation necessary to fund the memorandum of agreement between the city of Revere, Laborers Union Local 22, Unit A, covering the period of July 1 of 25 through June 30 of 28? Counselor Agenzio?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas?
Is absent.
Counselor Hermio?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel President Sylvesteri?
Yes.
Yes. The funding for the Unit B MOA has been approved. Calendar item number 16, Communication from the CFO Requesting an Appropriation to Fund the FY '25 Snow and Ice Deficit.
Mr. Viskey.
Good evening, Council. Richard Viskey, 281 Broadway, City CFO. As we get close to closing the fiscal year 2025, we have determined that all of our invoices for snow and ice removal for the winter of '25 have been submitted, all the overtime has been paid, and we are left with a deficit in the amount, just about what you're voting tonight. And part of the balance in the budget for the 2026 is to make sure that we do not have to raise that deficit on the Department of Revenue's tax rate recap, which is a requirement for any overspent snow and ice budget. So basically trying to clean that up before the fiscal year ends, so that does not have to be contemplated as we adopt the 2026 budget. And happy to answer any questions on that.
Thank you, Mr. Viskey. Any counselors? Madam Clerk, if we can roll call?
Shall the city council approve an appropriation from free cash in the amount of $640,000 to fund the FY '25 snow and ice deficit? Counselor Agenzio?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Garino-Sowaya?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hermio?
Is absent.
Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Garino-Sowaya?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas is absent. Counselor Hermio?
Is absent.
Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel President Sylvesteri?
Yes.
Yes. The appropriation has been approved. Calendar item number 17, Communication from the Mayor Relative to the Appointment of Judith Goslin to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board.
Appointments?
Calendar item number 18, Communication from the Policy Writer and Analyst Relative to Amendments to an Ordinance Further Amending Chapter 8.05 of the Revere Revised Ordinances: Regulation of Vacant Buildings.
Ordered to a public hearing?
Calendar item number 19, Communication from the Policy Writer and Analyst in Response to Counsel Order 25-131 Submitting an Ordinance to Amend Chapter 12.20 Poles, Wires, and Cables of the Revere Revised Ordinances.
Ordered to a public hearing?
Calendar item number 20, Motion Presented by Counselor McKenna That the Mayor Request Mastod to Clean Debris from All State Highways in Revere Including But Not Limited to American Legion Highway, Revere Beach Parkway, North Shore Road, and Lee Burbank Highway.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Madam Clerk, could we add Squire Road, north and south, please? It just seems like Everett-Chelsea, Revere, it seems like the surrounding urban communities are filthy, and it just seems that we don't get the attention that the suburban areas are getting. So I'm asking for the DOT to step it up. Thank you.
Counselor.
Counselor McKenna, can you add the Linway as well?
Sure. Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor, all opposed?
Aye.
So ordered.
Calendar item number 21, Motion Presented by Counselor Novoselsky That the Mayor, with the assistance of our state delegation and Governor Healey, request indirect the DCR to install pedestrian traffic control lights at the crosswalk located at 376 to 382 Ocean Avenue in the interest of pedestrian safety. The same request was submitted in 2021 without a response from DCR.
Counselor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I'd like to add Counselor Hermio to this, and this is a public safety issue, and the folks down there crossing the street are putting their lives on the line, having to depend on a stanchion saying of yield to pedestrians in the crosswalk. So we're asking that head buttons be installed with lights, so people will have to stop when the button is pushed. Hopefully, this new commissioner will be able to listen to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
And just noted for the record that Counselor Zambudo was recused from the prior two motions, 25-145 and 25-146. Calendar item number 22, Motion Presented by Counselor Kelly That the Mayor Request Brian Dakin, Leftfield Project Manager, to appear before the city council to discuss the elimination, reconfiguration of building design features of the new high school to reduce overall cost.
Counselor.
Mr. President, sorry about that. I brought this motion because of everything going on in the economy right now, and I think it's time to have a formal discussion about whether we can lower costs on the new high school in a smart way. There's a lot of uncertainty in the construction world, prices for materials, talk of tariffs, and we've already seen this hitting close to home. Tonight, for example, earlier tonight, we discussed tax breaks for HYM at Suffolk Downs, and now it's absolutely clear that work hasn't gone as planned there over the past year or so. So on top of that, we've got the school department announcing position cuts because they're running at a $7.3 million deficit. For me, these are all big red flags. So I'm asking that the city council agree that we need to have this conversation, even though it may be a tough one for us to have. We owe it to taxpayers to be fiscally responsible and act prudently with their money. I want to look at things like the number of sports fields, the kinds of materials we're using, and other design features to see if there's anything we can adjust to bring costs down without cutting corners on what really matters. We need to provide our teachers with all of the resources they need so that they are able to give our children great educations and learning experience. So I say, let's bring in Paul Dakin from Leftfield as soon as possible to help us figure this out together. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been asking for this for a whole year and a half now, to downsize, to bring a Cadillac down to a Camry. It's unfortunate that Counselor Kelly beat me to it. But I just want to say, it's not what's in the inside, the outside of a school, it's what's in the inside. It's the teachers that teach the kids. It doesn't matter what a school looks like. If it has wavy corridors or a zen garden or it looks like a campus. Saugus has a box, a brand-new school, a box that probably cost 10 times less than we paid, we are going to pay. And it's what's inside. It's the teachers. And I know that for a fact because I was a teacher for 33 years and I saw what happened inside the school, not what's outside, inside. So it doesn't matter how beautiful a school looks. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with this 100%. This motion, great motion. I do feel that we need to add more people to the list. Brian Dakin is not the sole decision-maker for cost. I really believe that the superintendent of schools needs to come here as well to discuss this in the whole administration because they're the ones that are really leading this. And being on the school building committee, there's a lot of people on there that make decisions. And, you know, as I said, I support this 100%, but would you be agreeable to amend it to put the superintendent?
Absolutely.
And maybe anybody else that would be a decision-maker or...
Absolutely.
I'll leave it up to you, Counselor, to decide on that. Is your motion?
I agree with what you just said, that, yeah, Diane Kelly, the superintendent, anybody else who's in this decision-making process. So I think we need to have a formal discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Point of personal privilege. So I spoke with the mayor this afternoon, right before the meeting, and he's let me know, I'm sure you do know this, that the numbers have come back on the first round and so far it is under budget. So we can cut some more, but just that's some good news at least that we're getting, it's, they came back under budget. So all in favor, all opposed? So ordered. As amended.
Calendar item number 23, Motion Presented by Counselor Cogliandro That the Mayor, CFO, Superintendent of Revere Public Schools, and any members of the Revere Teachers Association appear before the city council to discuss the incoming budget cuts, their impacts on students and teachers, and ways we can maneuver funding to ensure no one loses their jobs and children still have access to any and all educational needs.
Counsel Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. The motion kind of speaks for itself, but before I begin, I just would like to make an amendment. Instead of, I don't want it to be the CFO, I would like it to say the Revere Public School CFO, not Rich Viskey. I don't believe Rich tells them what to do with their funding. I think he says, this is what you have and this is what you can, you know, how much you have to use. But there's been a lot of confusion since the last Ways and Means School Committee meeting. And it was brought to my attention that there have been meetings, at least in one school that I've heard of, that they were told that the deficit was $14 million and that there were going to be teachers losing their jobs. And we'll let you know, this was an administrator, a school administrator, telling teachers that they're going to lose their jobs. It is completely unacceptable to be followed up by an email that says, oh, that's wrong, you know, don't worry about it. Or some people are still going to lose their jobs, but we'll, it's just getting ridiculous. And it was stated earlier by the co-president of the RTA, they deserve to know what's going on. And we need to have more public conversations about this. And as a council, we control the budget. And if there's something we can do to guide or to help with this process and help maneuver funding or cut from somewhere to give to somewhere else, let's do it because we need to. You know, the teachers and students are who we care about most. The teachers educate our children and obviously the children are more important than anything. But we owe it to have a conversation about this. There's a lot of, a lot of issues coming financially, you know, in the whole country. So I want to do my part to make sure that we keep everybody safe and we keep jobs to teachers in this city. That's pretty much it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered. Point of personal privilege. So Counselor Haas had to leave, but it's his daughter Annie's birthday today, so happy birthday, Annie Haas. Lenny, Lenny. I changed her name, but happy birthday, Lenny. So have a great night. End this business for today and...
Go Celtics.
Go Celtics.